Hi, welcome. Councilman Pinkett cannot join us today and I believe will be joined momentarily by Councilman Bullock. This is a legislative oversight hearing for Council Legislative Oversight 19-0057 on the subject of developing a shared vision for Baltimore City Department of Transportation and the Maryland Transit Administration, MTA, to improve transit service here in Baltimore. I am joined by my colleague, member of the committee, Councilman Dr. John Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And staff to the committee was Jennifer Coats, thank you. And we are joined today by representatives from MTA, the Department of Transportation, and the Parking Authority. And I am very thankful to be here today and to have MTA and DOT for the first time in memory working so closely together. This is really wonderful. I don't even think I anticipated you creating a joint PowerPoint presentation for today. And I didn't know I could be so excited about a PowerPoint presentation, but there is so much that this says. We also have representative from the mayor's office here, Matt Stegman. And I just want to make some kind of opening comments and then get into this wonderful PowerPoint presentation that you have and hear from all of you. I really want to thank you for collaborating on that. I received it last night and it really does look in a very short time with Administrator Quinn at MTA and Director Sharkey here at DOT. I think we, I mean, we've just, this is just really a sign of the strength and the level of opportunity that we have that seems, in my experience, unprecedented. I want to lift up what I think is kind of the emerging consensus across the country right now about what makes excellent transit and what local governments and transit agencies must do to ensure that riders are being provided with the best possible service. The real key is what happens in the right-of-way. Director Sharkey, some don't know, was once the director of right-of-way services here in Baltimore City. And how the right-of-way is designed and how that design interacts with the land uses that are adjacent is really at the core of good transit service. And I think that's really why during Baltimore's streetcar heyday, when land uses were densely concentrated around transit stops and when streetcars had dedicated right-of-way to operate in most corridors, people remember that service, that service, much more fondly than they think of today's transit service. And so I think we should all be asking how we develop transit streets and transit supportive land uses throughout the system, which of course does go beyond Baltimore City, but how we can develop these things as quickly as possible so that we see real improvements in the important transit metrics: speed, frequency, and reliability. So kind of to sum it up, to start off, I hope we can hold these five things in our mind as key elements of a shared vision and our shared responsibility for better transit. Transit streets and transit priority on our roads, that's the right-of-way component. Transit supportive land uses like higher densities, building up to the sidewalk, development that welcomes transit riders, much of which goes beyond either of your agencies but also incorporates things like zoning. Transit vehicle speed or travel time, frequency, or how often do vehicles arrive, and reliability, which looks at whether transit vehicles arrive when they say they will. So you've prepared this presentation, so I'd like to take most of our time here to hear the presentation and then we can raise some questions afterward. And I do want to also keep in mind, I think that, there were a couple of people that reached out to me in advance, and I haven't seen the list yet, I don't know if anybody's actually signed up to give testimony, but I may want to leave a few minutes toward the end of our slot here, which is a really, rather limited, like one-hour slot. So I want to try to at least leave a few minutes for some public testimony and any follow-up questions that Dr. Bullock and I might have in response to that testimony. So, without further ado, how would you like to proceed?
Hey, everybody, I'm Steve Sharkey, Director of Baltimore City Department of Transportation. I'll kick off the presentation. Kevin and I are doing this tag-team style, WWE, so come over, give them one of these right there. I think we even have joint costumes for Halloween, maybe like the Rockers, the '90s wrestling people, right? Awesome. It's going to kick butt, so let's do that. So just over, we just got a basic overview of the agencies, both agencies, both teammates. We got BCDOT, MTA partnership, couple recent examples, some ongoing efforts, also shared vision ahead. Just a quick overview of BCDOT. Our mission is to maintain and improve the transportation infrastructure to produce a safe, reliable, accessible, and efficient system for everyone that provides for multiple and sustainable modes of transportation for residents, businesses, and visitors, thereby promoting livable and vibrant communities against, across Baltimore City. So we have about a, you know, roughly $300 million budget all in per year, so again, got a lot to do, so we're working hard on it. Well, I'm going to just kick it off to Kevin.
Hi, am I saying it?
You can go in there if you want.
I'll stay here. Does this work? Great. Okay. Good afternoon, thanks for having me. My name's Kevin Quinn, I'm the administrator of the Maryland Trans Administration, and really happy to be here today. Just a quick overview of MTA. So we operate six modes of transit throughout the state of Maryland. A lot of folks think of us as just Baltimore service here in Baltimore. We do have a pretty sizable local bus network, as well as light rail, metro, and our mobility pair transit service. We also have two pretty sizable networks statewide of our MARC commuter rail system and our commuter bus network. We're the 12th largest system in the United States. We're pretty big with around $100 million rides per year. We also provide public school transportation for about 27,000 students per day. We have a 200-person police force that does a lot of coordination with Baltimore City Police. We also oversee around $140 million in funding for locally operated transit systems, including the Charm City Circulator. Steve, tag-team.
Yep. So some recent examples, given that Baltimore City serves as the core of the Baltimore metropolitan area, it should team, it should come to no surprise that BCDOT and MTA have a long history of working together. Although MTA is a state agency, the core service area has historically been focused on Baltimore City and its surrounding suburbs. Recent examples of this unique partnership include implementation of Baltimore Link, Transit App, Mayor Young's updated CTP letter prioritizing MTA funding, and road closure coordination and emergency response.
Okay. So first one, and we'll just kind of give an overview of each one of these. One is just implementation Baltimore Link, and specifically the capital improvements that I think were really key. So, you know, right outside, we've got five and a half miles of dedicated bus lanes in downtown Baltimore that we, you know, MTA does not control the infrastructure, and so we could not have done this without the help and collaboration and partnership with Baltimore City DOT. So that was a joint effort in both the corridor evaluation, where they were going to go, the designs, the development of the screening criteria, all of that. And so it was a really critical partnership. Another great partnership for us is our Transit Signal Priority. So we've equipped Transit Signal Priority sensors that allow our buses to communicate with traffic signals on our entire bus fleet. So 750 buses have those signals on them, and we've installed Transit Signal Priority technology on around 50 intersections, so that includes replacement of signal controllers, TSP equipment, software, cellular communications. We finished Phase 1, which is on York Road and Lock Raven. We've done those two corridors and we're working with Baltimore City DOT on two more corridors as part of Phase 2, which is Bel Air and Liberty Heights. So we've done the installation of the signal controllers, the TSP equipment, and the cellular modems, and we've got testing and optimization underway right now.
So just want to talk briefly about Mayor Young's shift towards, you know, embracing transit. So in his updated CTP letter, he focused on the importance of transportation and transit funding, both to the city and to the Baltimore region. So MTA does fall under the umbrella of MDOT, and Mayor Young submitted the revised CTP letter over the summer that outlined this. Also, after that, we also had the annual tour in which the mayor, as well as other elected officials and delegates, came to discuss the need for transportation, transit funding over time, especially the future shortfalls in transit funding.
Another area of partnership is our Transit App. So in June of 2018, we formally launched our partnership with the Transit App. We installed GPS devices on all of our buses, and so in partnering with Transit App, we send up our GTFS feed, our feed of where the buses are, up to Transit App, and that provides real-time transit information to all of our riders, as well as trip planning ability. So in addition to the transit services that we offer, we also incorporated data with Charm City Circulator, the Water Taxi, and the Harbor Connector, so really trying to provide a one-stop shop for folks where they have all their mobility options at their fingertips. And City DOT's shared mobility coordinator really helped to coordinate dockless vehicle companies, scooters, to incorporate their data into the app as well. So really working together to provide that information. We've got about 160,000 monthly active users on the Transit App, so pretty well used, you're one of them, right? Probably most of the people in the room are regular users. We've seen about 25,000 downloads per month, that's up nearly 20% over the last year. The 160,000 monthly active users is up about 40% over the last year. It's been, I think, a big success story for us in giving people information right in the palm of their hand.
Yeah, and I think we should make it a law right now that everybody who has a phone has to download the Transit App.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Just want to talk briefly about something that's a positive, that I think we still also need to work on more, is just that we're pretty good about road closure coordination and emergency response, especially with well-planned work. We're very good about getting MTA the information. And also, for a lot of the recent incidences we've had, we've had, I think, improved coordination, including Howard Street, as well as the bomb scare. We were able to call MTA pretty quick and coordinate on what was happening with some speed, so I appreciate that. I think we still need to work a little bit more on this with our sort of unexpected or emergency closures, which is definitely more on the city side, so hopefully we can work towards that with the multiple infrastructure failures that happen unexpectedly, kind of getting that word out is something that we can improve on as a city. So again, much of MTA's operational footprint is within the city of Baltimore on the right-of-way that is under the jurisdiction of BCDOT. This really means that the constant cooperation and communication is critical. Examples include monthly BCDOT/MTA joint meetings, which are attended by me and Administrator Quinn, as well as some subcommittee meetings, as I might like to call them, I wouldn't call them subcommittees, but there's other meetings on the side about particular issues that continue amongst staff. We have local transit operations where we have to work with Charm City Circulator and Harbor Connector, which MTA does have some involvement with. And of course, dockless vehicles for the first mile and last mile, and then Central Maryland Regional Transit Plan. So monthly BCDOT/MTA joint meetings, each month, we have representatives meet. The meeting location shifts back and forth so that nobody has to walk further. Of course, it's only three or four blocks. Meeting locations alternate, and some recent things that we've really been talking about are dedicated bus lane maintenance and bus lane banners, if everybody liked the banners that told people not to, not to get in the bus lane. Active DOT infrastructure projects that impact MTA service, permits to install new bus stops and shelters, which we've talked about, but again, the permitting process does have numerous steps, but we definitely want to make sure that we can get them through as much as possible within the rules of the city. And also, a lot about Transit Signal Priority implementation on corridors.
So we provide $2 million annually in state funds for Charm City Circulator operations. Baltimore City also has the Harbor Connector Ferry Project, so these are two federal grants for design-build of a new ferry boat, boat charging station, ADA landing, accessibility upgrades, and some rebranding, with an RFP expected to be advertised in spring 2020. So we are sort of overseeing that, the money flows through us, and so we report up to FTA, so that requires some close coordination. And we provide a good bit of technical assistance, whether it's federal regulatory compliance, you know, do RFPs have the right federal clauses? We do sort of that mundane RFP review to be sure everything's in compliance, as well as just general oversight management, planning, training, things like that.
Okay, dockless vehicles for the first and last mile. BCDOT's recently ratified dockless vehicle regulations, aimed to help guide the privately-owned vehicles to complement existing transit service. This includes having five equity zones on MTA property outside of the downtown core where dockless companies must place vehicles. This helps to ensure that the scooters are deployed across all of Baltimore City while also providing alternative to close the last-mile transit gap that exists in many of Baltimore's outer neighborhoods. DOT and MTA are currently working to finalize a formal MOU that will allow for the installation of mobility corrals in established equity zones.
So one of the many things that we talk about at our monthly meetings, which I'll just kind of take a step back for a second and just note that I think, folks don't know that we get together monthly and talk, right? There's a perception out there that there's a lack of communication, and so our teams, and they're pretty sizable meetings, are getting together once a month, as Director Sharkey noted, and that's something that didn't really happen in the past. Or if it did happen, I think it was just a sort of report out on stuff you had going on. I think now, you know, what we really try to do is get to action items, things the other team really needs to know, things that they need help with, things that they need our help with, things like that. So they're very productive meetings. One of those topics we hit on frequently is North Avenue Rising, our $27 million Tiger Grant, with a significant investment in bus and bike lanes, streetscaping, bus shelters, roadway renovations. Got a lot of community outreach, and frequently, we touch base on the community outreach component of that, to be sure we're hitting the right marks with City DOT. And then in August 2019, just a couple months ago, we started construction in the corridor. We really are taking, I think, a great complete streets focus with the installation of pads, sidewalks, conduit for traffic signals, pedestrian lighting, and we're looking at project completion in late 2021.
So joint BCDOT/MTA report is coming out by December 31st on dedicated bus lane enforcement. The active work group has been discussing and reviewing existing efforts related to bus lane enforcement from BPD, DOT, TOs, and MTA police. Numerous cities have also implicated, implemented dedicated bus lanes have also been studied to get a clear sense of some previous best practices. So in the Transit Priority Initiative, there's a holistic approach that aims to improve bus reliability, speed, and passenger safety that falls in line with complete streets efforts. Targeted investments can include curb extension, transit signal priority, dedicated bus lane, and queue jumps, and some other ideas. So this is kind of a, you know, some of these are, you know, we've definitely been doing a lot of, but some of these we talk about at those monthly meetings and try to, you know, jam out and kind of get some new ideas and see what, where some of these new things might work. So just want to talk more about complete streets in MTA. So Baltimore City's recently passed Complete Streets Legislation stands to benefit MTA in a number of ways. Motor hierarchy associated with the Complete Streets Legislation will reduce the prioritization of automobiles while simultaneously increasing the prioritization of pedestrian travel and transit services. Increased transit prioritization should help to improve on-time performance and overall reliability within MTA's core service areas as complete streets are implemented over time across Baltimore City. Early examples include dedicated bus lanes that have been implemented since Baltimore Link, as well as the recently installed floating bus stops include in the Hartford Road-Hamilton Main Street District. You know, and I think that there's a lot of other interesting things, like I said in the last slide, that, you know, we can continue to add on, so.
I'll just note on this last slide that, you know, up in the upper left is the banner that we collaborated on to get banners out there for, get people to respect the bus lanes. Note the $250 fine that people will incur. That bottom one is a picture of our light rail system, and we were having some issues with tree trimming. So tree trimming is very important on the light rail system, especially when winter rolls around, because if those trees aren't trimmed, they will fall onto the catenary and really mess up light rail service, so.
Is that a cherry picker tree trimming light rail car? Or is that?
I think it is. It's probably a high-rail vehicle, yeah, I believe it is. So we needed Baltimore City DOT to kind of run interference with, Liam, help me here, I think it's like the arb, the city arborist, the Parks and Recs side of things, and so we were, we were sort of being told, hey, you can't take down these trees. I said, well, we're going to have a real issue when winter rolls around if we can't take down some of these trees. Most, you know, they were dead, and so we ended anyways. So I think the role of City DOT is also to sort of help run interference a lot of times with us. We look at DOT as sort of our main point of contact, to run interference with other departments as well, to really help us move people.
This is awesome. I'm so glad to see this presentation here today. A couple notes, I got married a week and a half ago. I took the MARC train to start my honeymoon, so I started my honeymoon off on public transit, thank you, MTA. And in honor of Congressman Cummings, I'm going to be taking MTA service, the 22 from my house, over to New Salmas Baptist Church on Friday morning for the funeral services, so. I, you hit on a lot of the concerns that I have about some, like, kind of low-hanging fruit, I think. The banner is really great, you know, low-tech is good tech. Send the message pretty succinctly, stay where you belong, basically. I know, I know that you want those gifs like NY DOT has for their.
Really good, like zaps the car away.
I know, I know you want that bus laser action.
Yeah, let's get the laser budget up.
Yeah, I want, I want the laser budget up. And the car melter budget. So I have a number of different questions. Also, you didn't mention the bus stop guidelines that you just published, did you? Did you mention that?
No.
It's really amazing, and I want to, again, really commend MTA about a year, year and a half ago, I guess when Baltimore Link rolled out, some of my colleagues, I know Councilman Pinkett came to me and was like, one of my constituents just got a ticket in a brand-new bus stop that wasn't there a week ago, and I looked at it and I couldn't even see the sign. And then so I started asking like, hey, DOT, you are in control of this space, you obviously have the power to regulate how it's used, what are our internal standards on how bus stops are designed and signage is put up? And the response was, we defer to MTA. And I said, hey, MTA, what are the standards? And he said, well, you know, we've been getting around to this for a while, and so it's really nice to see something come to fruition and just an exceptional document on bus stop design. And again, I want to also thank Tom Hewitt for having, for allowing me the opportunity to review it in advance. There's one slide in there that I don't think would have been in there had I not made a comment about it, and I think that that's important about where we place bus stop signs on narrow sidewalks, so that they're not being placed in a way that obstructs pedestrians on the sidewalk, a specification for putting them outside of the sidewalk on, you know, we think of the private property and grass, to keep the sidewalk clear. And I think that that's a really good indication of just one of the many things that, many ways in which this is a good document for DOT to be adopting as its guidance. So I just want to bring that up and commend on that document. I have a whole bunch of questions here, I want to ask if Councilman Bullock has anything on his mind first.
Sure. So thank you, Mr. Chair. So really quickly, just want to echo a lot of what Chairman Dorsey has mentioned. Again, it's really great seeing the two working together, so it's very encouraging moving forward. One thing that I did want to double back on, you mentioned the tour and the mayor's CTP letter. Do want to follow up and see if there was anything that came out of that more recent exchange we had at City Hall and any takeaways from that process.
Well, I think that, I think it was a nice event in terms of, you know, the council and the mayor and the legislative officials from the state, I guess the delegates came together to really look at something and push one message. I think that was very positive. It garnered a fair amount of press in the transit circle of press pieces, so probably got like five to seven articles in Transit Journal. So it did certainly raise awareness about the need for transit funding that is not happening. And also, but I'd say that this transit issue is not just a Baltimore City issue, it's actually regional. So all the other county executives of Howard and Rundle and Baltimore County have similar issues, they have similar desires for increased and improved transit, which comes out in the regional transit plan, and we're hoping to work with them to, you know, increase the focus and usage of transit, considering that we have some numbers, which I don't think are realistic, that will have 10 to 12% more people in the next 25 years and 20 to 25% more jobs. Again, I'm not, I don't know how that number works out, we only get 12% more people and 25% more jobs, but we can't, we only have so much space, we can't just use the same way of getting people in cars all to the downtown or all to those particular spaces if we keep adding more cars to the congested roads.
I guess I'm not going to go in any particular order, just kind of the order things come to mind right now. You're going to have a report coming out in, also, I want to thank you for helping to coordinate all the elected officials on getting us on message for the road show. That was a first for me, thank you.
You're welcome.
You're going to have a report in December per the General Assembly Bill that requires a report to come out of this Bus Lane Enforcement Work Group. Can you give kind of any sense of the direction where that's going? I mean, I haven't personally attended any of those meetings. You know, and on background, I think a lot of folks know that in 2018, I pushed Delegate Lewis to introduce the first bill on this subject to give MTA the authority, and my position has always been, look, we can worry about funding when we need to worry about funding if we're going to put, say, automated cameras on buses, but let's at least get MTA the authority. And then I worked again with, and that was introduced at my request by Senator Conway in the Senate that year, and then in 2019, similar bill introduced at my request by Senator Carter to, again, give MTA the authority, at least just the authority to have and to use these cameras. And I, you know, I think the reporting from, there's, you know, clear reporting that shows that this is really the most effective way of monitoring and enforcing bus stops and bus lanes, and I'm still a staunch advocate for this to be the direction. I also recognize the challenges that the MTA has where the buses are getting crap kicked out of them on the streets of Baltimore City that are not in particularly good condition, and that, you know, that cameras become one more thing that would then end up having to be maintained when damaged by being jostled around. I have a clear understanding and respect for that. Ambassador Quinn, we've talked about this on a number of occasions, is this, is this something we're maybe moving toward even like in a pilot fashion? We've talked about, you know, outfitting only a small portion of the fleet, for example.
So I think, so I know that committee's still got a good bit of work underway and is still drafting the report. I know that they've done a really, a few really key things that I think are going to be important. So one is they've done a really good peer review of agencies around the country and taking a look at, you know, what enabling legislation there was, what are the citations? Is it sort of a graduated citation? So I think it was New York maybe that has a 50 and then a 100 and then 150 and 200. You know, the scale kind of goes up, it's not just like a flat 250 like our dedicated bus lanes. So there's different ways to implement sort of what the fine is. I think that peer review that I've seen is really good, and I think it explores the technologies out there as well, whether that's stationary cameras, placement of those cameras, upkeep, maintenance, as well as the technologies on the buses as well. And again, that includes whether it's buses, not just the buses themselves, but also the manpower that's needed to review the videotape, take a look at all that kind of stuff. So I think that that's kind of where that is right now, and I will let the report kind of speak for itself.
Okay. And then you touched on the maintenance of bus lanes, and I'm not aware of a clear understanding of kind of the delineation of responsibilities or whatever related to that. There's a lot of paint that's not there anymore.
Yeah. So under an MOU that I guess was, we recently signed.
Yep, like two months ago.
Just a couple months ago. So MTA has a responsibility for maintenance of those bus lanes. So MTA has a responsibility for maintenance of those bus lanes. We have it programmed for next spring. We were going to be doing some work on Baltimore and Fayette Streets in the fall. I think there's some good work that Baltimore City D O T is going to be doing on those streets, and so I think we're looking at a good bit of dedicated bus lane repainting in the spring for those streets that right now are really showing that they need a fresh coat. I'll also just note that we've been testing out at our Washington Boulevard Division, I've seen various technologies, so, or types of paint, basically, you know, so, you know, what's been working better, so that we have a more permanent type of paint this time that doesn't kind of flake off so easily. Yeah.
You have any thoughts on that you want to share?
Oh, no, I'd be excited to see the new types of paint.
Is the Transit App being advertised on the buses or at the bus shelters?
Yes.
You have pretty successful use of that.
Yeah, I think, you know, we go in and out of different types of campaigns. Right now, though, there are Transit App advertisements at bus shelters, on buses, we have Transit App wrapped buses.
I saw that one the other day, yeah.
Yeah, that's a cool bus. And so, so yes, we are doing advertisements. We go in and out of campaigns. Right now, for example, we're doing a campaign of to hire MTA police officers. So that's sort of like our big focus right now is take the test, join the best. So that's our big campaign we have right now. And then, you know, we might switch back to Transit App. We kind of go in and out of different types of campaigns. But certainly, getting the word out there is absolutely key. We do a lot of social media pushing that doesn't really cost a whole lot of money, and so that is sort of never-ending. You'll see that we are constantly pushing Charm Pass and Transit App and for folks to use those two.
So I have a couple of questions related to the circulator and the shuttles that we have in the city and the challenges of kind of potentially duplicative service and things that are kind of in perhaps conflict with the, with MTA in certain ways. In your presentation, noted that MTA puts $2 million up to help fund the circulator, is that correct?
That's correct.
Why does MTA help fund the circulator?
It's, you know, is McDonald's ever going to help fund Burger King?
That's a great question.
It's part of the lots program, so.
I think that that was done many years ago before our time, and I don't, I don't know that I can speak to exactly why that happened, but there was a decision made somewhere along the way for the state to fund the circulator.
Does that-
You want to answer this, Holly? Holly's our deputy administrator-
Yes.
-at MTA who seems to know the-
Hey, Holly.
...some of the history on this.
Well, so some of the history on this and continuing going forward is because they're providing public bus service in the region, their report to the National Transit Database, there's federal funds associated with that, so like we get credit for the miles that the circulator runs, and so it's not really fair for them to run the service and for us to not pass the money back. So like when it was first started, there were some agreements that were made that we would help with that, and in the first couple of years before they did the N T D reporting, and now we're going through that kind of official process.
That's a really good answer. Does the, is there any sort of, I don't know if you know the answer to this, Holly, I mean, restrictions tied to that? I mean, does, is there, one of the things that I know that's been discussed a number of, over time, is the decisions about the routing of the circulator and how it maybe is in competition with MTA or is duplicative of service. Is this something that, it's a conversation that really wasn't happening in a powerful enough way for a number of years. I'm wondering, is this something that's happening now? Is this something that we're making some progress on talking about? How these things work hand in hand?
Definitely, I wouldn't say real progress at this point. I mean, we're just focusing on, really focusing on getting the basics down of working together. We've had, shared some ideas back and forth a little bit about some route differences, but I don't think we've come to any sort of agreement at this point in time. But I think once we're, have more of a data shop up and we can, I do believe in the future, especially after May 1st, it'll be much more advantageous to really start looking into that.
Does that make sense?
So I'll 100% agree. I'll just, I'll just note that circulator duplication of MTA routes is not necessarily always a bad thing.
Okay.
So for example, on Charles and St. Paul, I think the circulator's pretty helpful. I think there are other routes, though, where there is duplication that doesn't make a lot of sense. And so I think it would be good to take a fresh look at that.
And then, one thing, so this is actually not the first time we've had MTA in here. It came what, two years ago on the date of the road, or a year and a half ago maybe on the date of the road show, and we had a conversation about what D O T could be doing to, you know, better assist MTA in delivering on its mission. And one of the things that I have been bringing up since before then is the idea of cash out and the idea of downtown businesses subsidizing, and the city as a huge culprit, the city of Baltimore as a huge culprit in subsidizing people's parking and therefore basically incentivizing people to drive their cars. And I know this is particularly an issue for places like southeast where we have a lot of people coming in from 95 through Dundalk, Canton, through Fells Point and over to downtown, or even just from Canton to downtown, and creating a significant level of congestion there that is, you know, essentially prohibitive of fast transit service coming through there. Are we talking about collectively the kind of policymaking changes that are on the horizon? This is something, cash out is one example, the bus lane enforcement stuff, if there needed to be enabling legislation. Are we talking about other kind of legislative policy stuff that's supportive of one another that, that should be happening? And I ask this largely also because I want to know where I should make time to advocate at the state level in the coming year and what I should be thinking about here at the local level as something that you're going to both collectively support.
Well, I'll say what Kevin probably can't say is that we definitely need to make sure MTA gets its proper capital funding. So I'll let him not say that, but I will say it.
Yeah. I mean, any other sort of, I mean, there were other transportation-related bills that I asked members of the General Assembly to introduce at my request last year. Some of them may or may not, you know, I mean, one of those things was giving the city autonomy in determining speed limits on city streets. Another one was giving the city autonomy in how to use speed cameras. I don't know if those things are, fit into your, you know, shared priorities, but are there any other policy changes that are coming, you know, policy desires that we as council members can be, you know, I don't know, talking about?
So we, we submitted, the mayor's office of Government Relations asked each agency to submit state legislative priorities back in September, and D O T submitted kind of a list of 11, but roughly four to five we thought were worth going after this session. And at least two of them are items that you mentioned. One is the authority for C D D O T to establish maximum speed limits on city roads without a traffic study or engineering study. The other one would be 24-hour, seven-day-a-week operation of speed cameras.
Cool.
I don't, I don't know that I have anything off the top of my head, and I'm happy to go back and get you, give you some recommendations. I think one thing that's key to note is I think what you're seeing here with Baltimore City D O T is really important, just the daily regular coordination that we're having. And I guess I'd want you to know that that coordination's taking place also with the planning, city planning, city housing, and other departments as well. So, you know, one of the issues that we've had for years is site plans and development taking place without really regard for transit. And so I think that's changed. You know, we now have folks that review the city's development plans so that we're not taken off guard when we get a call from a developer to remove a bus stop from out of the side of a new development, which was happening for a while. We're coordinating with Housing Department, I was just talking to Zach Chiselle, our manager of Project Development today, about a great meeting that they had the other day that we set up with city planning, city housing, to talk about how we really leverage transit assets up in northwest Baltimore around our metro stations, right? So we have these great metro stations, we have parking lots, it's really kind of like an unutilized, underutilized kind of T O D asset that we have there. And so those conversations are happening. I don't know a lot of times that we need some massive policy or legislative changes. A lot of times, it's just people talking, it's communication, it's that coordination to be sure that we're all on the same page. I think that's a, that's a big piece of it, and I think we've got a good team that's doing that.
Director Sharkey said that he was going to say what you can't say about getting transit funded in the state. Do you also want to say that Baltimore City should stop subsidizing parking for its employees?
Sure.
All right. I think that covers a lot of the questions. I think my main hope here today was really to, I don't know, create a forum where we're talking together. Before I say anything more, I want to ask if Laura from the Parking Authority has anything she'd like to talk about?
Not in particular, just wanted to add that when projects come up that generally we coordinate with MTA and with B C D O T. I guess a good example is with the dedicated bus lanes and with North Avenue Rising, basically reviewing areas where we had parking or loading zones and working to move those for the dedicated lanes to come through.
Thank you. One other thing, one of the areas that, as part of that first mile, last mile, is like right there, at the bus stop. Baltimore City provides benches, but MTA provides shelters. I can often get a bench put in with a 3-1-1 request, or, you know, make some special requests and get those things done. But I know that MTA has some particular metrics for, like a rubric for where shelters can go or should go. How many shelters are there in the network? There's like 1,300 or something like that?
No. Shelters, we have four, is it two, 400? 200? 400, yeah, 400.
400 shelters total?
Yes.
In the whole city?
Correct.
That's the whole network, so Baltimore City, Baltimore County, and Rundle County.
And then within that, within the rubric, what are they, like 800 or 1,200 that would say they're kind of deemed acceptable for a shelter, like where?
Yeah, 1,000 sounds about right.
So like four, and of the 400 that exist, not all 400 of them meet the standards of that rubric, am I correct? I mean, some of them were just kind of placed somewhere, somewhere, sometime in the past.
So probably not all, but I would say most.
But most of them.
I would say most, right? These are high ridership areas, transfer stops, yeah.
You know, I don't imagine it's going to end up with all of the, all of the priorities of D O T, like right now, that we're going to start funding shelters at some significant rate or something like that. But, you know, I wonder if over the next six months or year, there is other, we might see any kind of investments for things like that that just really enhance the rider experience. What's on the horizon in the next six months or year? From, from either of you, for, I mean, is D O T funding anything like this? Does it have specific plans for things? I mean, look, we just did the floating bus stops in the Hamilton Business District. You mentioned the idea of curb extensions, and I think with that goes the potential for having more floating bus stops, whether they be of temporary materials or more permanent materials, things like that, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I'd say we're definitely, as complete streets move along, we're trying to add more features. That could include bus lanes, could include some, you know, things to make it easier to get on the bus. So it's not, I don't say, there's no pot of money to do that, but it's certainly a focus. And, you know, I definitely talked with Tom, I don't think Tom is here, nope, Tom Hewitt. I was talking to him about his bus stop manual, and we just were jamming out about bus stop length. I'd like some of these bus stops to be longer, just because they can't fit. So certainly be supportive, but I'm not telling you there's a lot of cash to do all this.
Yeah. One of my favorite diagrams in the bus stop manual is the one that shows how far back from an intersection a bus stop needs to be if it's on one side of the street while there is a turn on the route coming up, and how far it has to be given the number of lanes that the bus would have to travel across in order, before making that turn. That is the nerdiest diagram in that whole manual, I think, and I love it more than any other page in it.
We love that page, too. It's a good one.
Thank you.
I'll just note with the bus stops, so we do have about 150 bus stops in the pipeline right now, so, you know, we're designing them, we've selected locations. And so Director Sharkey and I have talked frequently about the permitting process, and I think he's open to ways and staff are open to ways to try to expedite as sort of best we can. We run into a lot of situations where there's just very unique circumstances around the city with sort of each individual location that make it hard to issue kind of a blanket permit, if you will. We also run into ADA.
There's like a very, very low number of stops that are actually ADA compliant.
Yeah, right. So whenever we go there, whenever we touch that bus stop, we now need to make it ADA compliant all around, which is not just additional construction work, but additional design time and design work. And so it ends up taking a really long time. So we're, we're working really internally. We've had a ton of great meetings about this, about how to expedite our bus shelter installation process.
And we're definitely, let me just jump in, we're definitely trying, but there is rules and regulations set forth, including by the Board of Estimates. So some of these aren't even permits, these are minor privileges which are not technically permits. They are actually a grant, a near forever perpetual grant of land, so to speak. So that's just the process that the bus, one of the processes it has to go through, and we can't really short-circuit that Board of Estimates process.
One quick follow-up question around those additional stops. How dispersed are they or are they concentrated in particular areas? Can you just speak a little briefly?
So part of our rubric takes a look at geographic dispersion equity. We are very careful not to sort of load up one area with new bus shelters, we spread them out.
Okay. I think this is really great, if I haven't made that clear. I, I think I was saying to some of the folks from MTA before the hearing began, I don't, I haven't tended to make like a really big deal about these hearings and like try to do a whole lot of like dog and pony show about this and like bring in huge crowds of people or anything like that. Mostly what we're hearing is, you know, that you guys are preparing like really thoughtful presentations and something that gives us as representatives something to chew on and some way that we can be as engaged as possible in supporting your work and, and then also the dialogue about, you know, what we're maybe seeing in our communities that's of importance. And I just want to make sure that we continue to do this, and I hope that, you know, sometime, maybe six months from now or nine months from now or sometime next year, we can come back and we can do this again and say, you know, kind of maybe here's where we were today and, you know, talk about what progress has been made since then and, you know, how we're thinking in even more new and adventurous ways. I had a couple of people sign in, but it doesn't look like anybody signed up to provide any testimony. I see a hand there. I'm going to call up, is that Danielle? Please, come to the front, Danielle. Well, not all the way to the front, to the middle. And pull the mic down. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Danielle Sweeney, an organizer with the Central Maryland Transportation Alliance. I'm happy to be here at the MTA D O T Shared Vision Hearing. This has been a long time coming. This is really good. In your PowerPoint, you two addressed most of our concerns, so I only have two things to talk about. One is the bus lane M O U, which you signed a couple of months ago. Have you made that public? I don't think you have.
Danielle, the format here is that you're, to address the, sorry, excuse me, to address the committee and if we have questions that we can-
Okay. So regarding the M O U that was signed a couple of months ago, I'm asking if D O T- I, I'm asking if DOT and MTA have made it public?
Okay, and you have a second question.
The second question concerns DOT parking ticket data. Approximately 12,000 citations have been written for bus stop and bus lane violations since December of 2017. But only about 4,000 of the tickets have latitude and longitude data, so they're not geolocated. You really can't, you know, throw the data up on a map and see all of them. And without good geolocation data, it makes it hard to identify where the violations occur and what areas need more enforcement. So we're asking DOT to look into getting better geolocation data. And additionally, it looks like your parking ticket data has not been updated since September 5th. And it's October 23rd. So we want to know what's caused the six-week delay.
Okay, cool. Appreciate, I'm going to ask a couple of follow-up questions here of the folks here. And I'm, but I'm also going to speak to this a little bit because I've dug into this issue on the geolocating on the tickets. There is some like pretty weird technological challenges related to the use of the equipment that's used to issue the tickets and how it records locations at that point of issuing the ticket. And then how, and with data that may be imperfect. And I know that there are some new handhelds that have been getting, that have been ordered recently or issued recently. And then also, so in the past, there've been big challenges around this just basically because you would have, there's an algorithm that says basically, if we don't think that we're reasonably confident that we have the right location, we're not going to post it as a location. So in the past, for example, if a parking attendant marked something down as 500 Charles Street, there's only a 50/50 shot that it's North Charles or, or South Charles. And so the algorithm says that's not a good enough probability that we think it was the right place. And so it doesn't, basically it has to retrofit a GPS location. It had, they had to retrofit a GPS location based on its confidence level that it had the exact right address location. And then from that GPS location, only if there was a GPS location would things like council district and police district be extrapolated automatically. That's why we didn't have that kind of data in the past. And I'm wondering, that's a really good question, are the new handhelds providing that kind of data? Doing it, doing the GPS automatically?
I don't know if, I haven't looked at the data yet. So they came up a couple of weeks ago, rollout. Let me just actually give the TOs a lot of credit that from May till maybe August, they were writing hand tickets. And then from August on, they went through the old system. But then we were able to quickly transition to the new system. So I'll, we'll definitely have to see what data they provide and how it's transferring over into the new sys, into the online systems.
And that's great. Also, I'll send an email or something to follow up with you about that. The, you got some new TOs recently, right? Like 13 new hires or something like that?
Yeah, I think they're, but I think a lot of them are part-time TOs. A lot of times people start part-time and then come full-time later on. Yeah, so, and that's to hopefully get some more action in the residential permit parking zones.
And then I would say even with, but I guess, I'm not sure what the scope of the tickets that Daniel was referring to, 12,000. It sounds like they're all referring to bus stop tickets. I don't know, I mean, that 12,000 is kind of on, on par, it's close on par with what things have been annually year over year for a number of years. I know when I first came onto the council, there had been 6,000 DOT tickets issued the previous year and MTA police had issued 4,000 themselves, so there was like 10,000. If DOT alone is up to 12,000 in a year, then that's a significant increase. And so that's, it sounds like more productivity happening in, in that. But it also sounds like maybe the rate of violation isn't going down even when we have increased fines and increased efforts. So that's concerning and I hope that that's something that gets addressed more thoroughly when we have this, you know, when we do whatever this December report says that we should be doing. Is the MOU on maintenance going to become public? Is that, is that some, I mean, if, if it's a document, I guess I can.
I mean, it's a public document, so.
Yeah, is it, I mean, is that, is that posted?
So I think it went, so it went before the city's Board of Estimates a couple of months ago. So I believe that, that would have been a public document when that went up as part of the agenda.
As it turns out, such documents are not actually revealed when they go through the Board of Estimates. Only some summary statement that such a document exists. It'd be wonderful if our Board of Estimates had more technological capacity to be able to put those documents online and maybe even have.
We'll make sure we get it to you. We'll make sure we get it to you.
Cool, yeah, it'd be great to see that put online somewhere. Thanks. I think Danielle is the only person, oh, Jed Weeks, there we go.
Hi, Jed Weeks. I am the registered lobbyist and policy director for Bike More. Don't really have a lot to add beyond the questions Danielle asked and that the committee has asked. And I'm really thankful to have two people who are at the top of their game, working together at these agencies for the first time in a long time. So it's, it's really awesome. Which is why we don't have a lot to talk about. I think the couple of things that I am interested in seeing are, are agencies that are working together, looking at other things that might have been potential lost opportunities that are, that sort of happened under the prior administration that we might be able to save. And I'm not sure what those are, but I think, you know, North Avenue Rising was a project that MTA put a ton of time, money and effort into. And our prior administration, you know, from the mayor down, didn't really see it as a major priority and didn't commit as much funding as they really needed to to make that, you know, world-class project as opposed to just a, a significant improvement. So there might be other things like that that we could be looking at to prevent, you know, messing them up. I think the other things I'm interested in seeing are what else we can do to get vehicles out of the bus lanes beyond just enforcement. We also have all of these private shuttles that are using the bus lanes that are eating ridership away from MTA and away from the circulator. And they're blocking the MTA and the circulator in those bus lanes by using them. So I don't know why the Hopkins Shuttle or the BG Shuttle or any of these other things that are cannibalizing ridership that the taxpayers are funding are able to use these lanes. And maybe we should push them out of the lanes too and into general travel lanes. So I'd like to see some coordination around that. With the bus stop citations and the tickets for being in the bus lane, I also think it would be helpful if that could be broken out into two different ticket categories so we could try to figure out ways to, you know, there's, there's, there's different solutions if it's a bus stop or a bus lane in terms of enforcement, in terms of signage and in terms of, you know, markings and how we treat those things. So it'd be nice to see that broken out both in 3-1-1, like parking in a bike lane is. But right now with 3-1-1, it just says bus stop. There's no bus lane differentiation. But also with the citations themselves. And then finally, I have a question that I'd love the committee to ask. And I've just always wondered about it because I've never heard a clear answer from anyone. What is the deal with signal prioritization on the light rail through downtown? And is there anything DOT can do to make it better so the light rail moves faster through downtown?
Okay, thank you, Jed. Did you guys hear that question? Can either of you speak to that at all?
And we're going to wrap it up here in just a That is another topic of conversation at last month's meeting. So we're definitely talking over some technology changes that probably need to be made. This was the first TSP version ever, so it's certainly not up to par at this time. So we're working that out hopefully soon. Well, it might take a while, but yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, just to, with some more specifics, I mean, we, so our light rail vehicles, some of them are working, some of them aren't with their sensors. The, the new vehicles, so you know, we're undergoing a $150 million overhaul of our 53 light rail vehicles. And so those vehicles that we're getting back, we need to install transit signal priority sensors on. And we got to make sure that the technology that's on the vehicles is the same as what's in the signals. And so it can be, it can be done. We've just got to get the technology up and working, invested in and get them communicating and we'll be up and running. But as, as Director Sharkey noted, we spent a good bit of time on this at last month's meeting and it's a great thing to talk about.
We're at 4 o'clock exactly, so if I'm lucky, there's 20 seconds left in this hearing time. Last question, do you guys have a favorite WWE tag team?
It's the Rockers. You just have to go with the Rockers.
We'll, we'll be the Rockers for now.
The Rockers for now, okay. This hearing is adjourned. Thanks so much, everybody.
That's our, that's our tag team.